Am I not on? Oh, I'm on.
There you go. Now you're ready.
All right. All right, everybody. Welcome to the Tuesday, October 28 regular meeting of the Placerville City Council. If you'd all rise and please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you very much. Would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Carter?
Here.
Mayor Clarici?
Here.
Vice Mayor Gotberg?
Here.
Councilmember No?
Here.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Here.
All righty. All right, we got some ceremonial matters. 3.1, a proclamation of the city council commemorating Veterans Day, November 11, 2025. I have a proclamation here. It's a resolution. Obviously, we honor our veterans' service to our country. I come from a general-- it skipped me, but I come from a family that served all the way back to the-- my great-grandfather served in the Civil War. And so I appreciate service. I grew up in a military house. And I will be reading this at the Veterans Day celebration over at the county facility. And if you ever have a chance, if you haven't been over there, you should go. What the folks here in the county have done over there is remarkable. And it's quite a place. It's very moving if you kind of walk through there and sort of observe everything that's there. So I'll be reading this there, and I will be present. So there's that. We also have a proclamation of the city council declaring November 1, 2025 as Extra Mile Day. And I will go through this one because I'm not going to read this anywhere else. Proclamation of the city council, the city of Placerville commemorating veterans-- no, that's the wrong one. It's the right one, but not the right one. I shuffle these enough, I confuse myself. A proclamation of the city council, the city of Placerville, declaring November 1, 2025 as Extra Mile Day in the city of Placerville. Whereas the city of Placerville is a community which acknowledges that a special vibrancy exists within the entire community when its individual citizens collectively go the extra mile in personal effort, volunteerism, and service. And whereas the city of Placerville is a community which encourages its citizens to maximize their personal contribution to the community by giving of themselves wholeheartedly and with total effort, commitment, and conviction to their individual ambitions, family, friends, and community. And whereas the city of Placerville is a community which chooses to shine a light on and celebrate individuals and organizations within its community who go the extra mile in order to make a difference and lift up fellow members of their community. And whereas the city of Placerville acknowledges the mission of Extra Mile America to create 550 extra-mile cities in America and is proud to support Extra Mile Day on November 1, 2025. Now therefore, I, John Clarici, mayor of the city of Placerville, do hereby proclaim November 1, 2025 to be Extra Mile Day. I urge everyone in the community to take time on this day to not only go the extra mile in his or her own-- his or her own life, but to also acknowledge all those who are inspirational in their efforts and commitment to make their organizations, families, community, country, or world a better place. So, speaking to the extra-mile idea, lots of things wouldn't happen in this town if it wasn't for volunteers and people that are willing to do and give of their time and expertise and money and efforts. And so we always appreciate that. I have run in my life a couple of volunteer organizations, and I can tell you without hesitation that if it wasn't for volunteers, lots of things would never get done. And in many cases, they're some of the nicest things in our community. So everybody, go volunteers. Before we get to the next item, does anybody want to add anything to this? And do we have any comments for our veterans and/or extra miles? All righty, all right. We'll bring it back here. This is great. The next thing is great. 3.3 Administration of Oaths of Office, Code Enforcement Officer and Police Officer, Chief Wren.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. Joe Wren, your police chief. It is a great thing. Of all the things I get to do, welcoming new people into our city family is truly awesome. We've had a pretty good track record of hiring some just absolutely exceptional people, and these two that you'll meet tonight are no different. So I'd like to call up Emmanuel and Jay. I'm going to be real brief because I told them to prepare a 15-minute speech each, so I don't want to cut into their time. I am going to give them an opportunity to introduce themselves to you and also any guests that they have tonight, and then we'll get down to business.
Hello, everybody. My name's Emmanuel. Last name valid as as many will probably end up knowing me. So I actually was born in Placerville, even though I didn't start my career here. So, you know, glad to be home and coming back. I came from my two parents back over here. They both immigrated from Mexico, so I grew up in a Spanish-speaking household. So that's actually come very helpful this whole entire time, luckily, especially with a lot of my fellow officers being able to help come over and just be like, oh, look, translating. Now things are actually going smoothly. I, you know, grew up in the general area as well. I've lived my whole life in Cameron Park. Living like living there, I went to, you know, Bluo, Camarado, Ponderoso, where I played a lot of football. From there, you know, I learned a lot of leadership stuff, had teachers that really inspired me that made me want to go into law enforcement. Even one of my old teachers, it was my ROP law teacher, he was actually a former police officer here in Placerville, Chris Wooliver. So, you know, he helped me, you know, learn that I want to be a police officer. I also had my, like, football coach, specifically Coach Llewellyn. He helped me out a lot. And then, you know, I've always had like a good path, being able to like have good friends and family. My younger brother back over here, Ivan, he's basically been my best friend my whole life. So I always have him to be able to lean on and everything, so that's always been good for me. Especially, you know, my girlfriend, Emma, who's over back over there, being shy. But she's been great. She's always been there to help me out. So, you know, I started my career off as a SAC PD officer. I worked there for a little bit, realized I want to come back home, so I was really grateful, especially when Chief Wren gave me the chance to come up here and work here, and I've enjoyed every single day up here. So I've had several coworkers here that I've just become like family close, and I'm grateful for everything that they've helped me with. So that's me.
Well, thank you very much for that. We won't hold the Pondo thing against you, but it's okay. It's okay.
Hi, I'm Jay Roberts. I am actually not originally from Eldorado County. I grew up in Sacramento, first moved up here in 2008. I actually just started with the city this week, but the last two days have been amazing. I came from the county, also in code enforcement. I did that for about four years, and prior to that, I worked in the building permit center. So I have an interesting background in knowledge, understanding, you know, how permits work, plus enforcing the zoning codes for the county. So I'm excited for the opportunity to be here and bring my knowledge and be in a new jurisdiction and just have a new adventure. I live in Shingle Springs now. I have two cats. That's kind of it. I'm a pretty simple person. Again, I'm happy to be here, so thank you for the opportunity.
Well, thank you for joining us and welcome. All right.
All right, thank you. We'll do the swearing in now. Emmanuel, yeah? You want your--
Get everybody up here. Come on. Don't be shy.
Are you guys talking about salary?
Yeah.
Yeah? I explained to him, I do things a little different, even though it's, you know, for the personnel that we're swearing in, their families are largely part of the life we've chosen to live, to sacrifice and service that we dedicate to citizens. So again, you're in it as much as he is. I just won't call you for your relationships. So then, Sam, raise your right hand, please. You can start. Give him a badge. I state your name.
I'm Jay Roberts.
You solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Ooh, a badge. Nice.
That concludes the sermon.
Okay, great. Thank you. Does anybody want to comment on our ceremonial matter there? Okay, great. Thank you. We have law enforcement on the dais. I am the proud father of a police officer, so welcome to Placerville and give 'em heck out there. All right. Okay, so we got any comments up here?
Just welcome. We're thrilled to have you guys. Thank you very much for working for the city.
Very much so. Okay, thank you. All right, let's move forward. All right, we'll give you-- we'll give everybody a minute if they want to go. Trust me, you want to go. You don't want to hang around here. I'm only here because I have to be here. It's like-- All right. That was fantastic. Okay. We do not have a closed session report because we did not have a closed session. Do we want to adopt the agenda with one revision? And that is, we are going to pull item 12.3 by the request of the applicant? Applicant, okay, great. So that is our task. Do we want to adopt that?
I'll move we adopt the agenda with the pulling of 12.3.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All righty. Announcements, presentations to the public. I will start over here.
I have none.
I have a couple. I attended the Hanging Justice Event put on by the Historical Society last week at the Morning Star Lodge, the down the street.
Yeah.
Odd Fellows Building. It was wonderful. Congratulations. They actually had some really cool historical artifacts, like they had a ship that was actually built by the inmates themselves in the jail below the courthouse that the family has held on to for these 100-plus years. So that was really awesome. Also, attended our Recreation and Parks Commission meeting. That was great. I want to thank Dennis for putting together a great group of people and running those meetings so smoothly, and thank them for their service also. And I look forward to seeing everybody out there for Halloween.
Yes.
Big event coming up.
Halloween over here.
I have nothing.
I have none.
Okay, and I don't have anything either, except go to Halloween. It's a big day on Main Street. Good times are had by all. Okay, great. Thank you very much. Does anybody want to comment on our comments? Okay, great. We will now go to the consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion by roll call vote unless any member of the council wishes to remove an item for discussion. The reading of the full text of all resolutions and ordinances will be waived unless a council member requests otherwise. So do we want to pull anything off of our agenda? Okay, we do not. Would the public wish to comment on our consent calendar?
Mr. Mayor, just really quick--
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Point of clarification, item 7.1, the minutes, do not reflect a vote on the consent calendar, so I would just like to note that those will be amended to reflect that they were moved by Councilmember Yarborough, seconded by Councilmember Carter, and it was a unanimous vote.
Okay. Oh, well, thank you very much for that clarification. Sue, does that change your mind about commenting?
No.
Okay, great.
I wanted to comment on 7.5 and say that really glad to see this going forward to fix some of our crazy streets. And as usual, Placerville strikes back, and they find things under the ground that they were not expecting to find, but they got it fixed and we're moving forward. So we'll have safe streets and decent streets for kids to go to school by next year.
Well, thank you very much, Sue. You know, if we knew what we weren't expecting, that would be helpful, but it's like a random not expecting this generator here in town, and that's what I guess makes it exciting. So, all right, well, thank you very much for that comment. Does anybody else wish to comment on our consent calendar? Okay, can we get a motion to move it?
I'll move the consent calendar.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Carter?
Aye.
Councilmember No?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gotberg?
Aye.
Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Public comment, non-agenda items. Dispersion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter not on the agenda. That is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. State law prohibits the council from acting on items not listed on the agenda except by special action of the city council under specified circumstances. The mayor reserves the right to limit speakers' time to three minutes, which I will, and follow the golden rule when you get up there to talk. Okay. Oral, we are opening up for oral communications. Go.
Mayor, council, my name's Major Pat Williams, retired military. My family went mayor Revolutionary War.
There you go.
So my family's been in the military forever. Chief, I'm going to acknowledge you too. Reason I'm here is because on October 22, we had a situation with 50, evidently Caltrans decided in their infinite wisdom to shut down one lane. It was during the lunch hour. I was stuck on the freeway for 25 minutes trying to just turn off to get off on Bedford. I got past Mosquito Road or Mosquito, and I did get a chance to talk to one of the Placerville police that was also stuck on the freeway. And basically, they didn't-- they weren't happy either. From that point on, I must say that it's cumulative. I come here to do business. I want to come visit the businesses. I want to do business with the businesses. But if I can't get to the businesses, then it's a problem. Now, I must say, I did stop by City Hall and I had a little conversation with some of your staff. I was not very happy, mainly with, I understand that the businesses decided that 30 years ago not to put a bypass. I do think that there needs to be another overpass. I know it takes 12 to 20 years to get that. I don't know what's been done in the meantime. I think Bedford is the main problem in westbound traffic. If my-- it is a safety issue. Now, I worked medical. I was a combat medic. I was an aerial paramedic. I was a medical administrative officer. My neighbor that lives up with me, Pollock Pines, told me she had an appointment at Kaiser down in Folsom, and what ended up happening is she almost missed her appointment. Now, I don't know whether Caltrans cleared it with you guys or not, but I do know this, that every October with Apple Hill and South Lake Tahoe, we have so much traffic, and it's mainly to westbound. So my thought is, is that there has to be something with the county supervisors and with Caltrans, and then it's your city. With that said, I hope that something can be resolved because it really is not good for your business owners or anyone that lives in the county. I didn't live, come here to get stuck in traffic.
Thank you, Pat. Anyone else wish to comment during our open mic?
Hi, my name's Max Storten, resident of Placerville. I spoke with Melissa this past week and realized that we may need an overall study of what roads are private roads and what roads are Placerville public roads. It was about a repair request for Garden Loop, which is this weird little street up at the top of-- and they were told by the city employees that Garden Loop is a private road. My understanding is that it's not a private road, and it would seem that it's not, and that the city has fixed potholes for years. And I think it's a very weird area, and I know there's lots of other streets around here that are-- it's unclear who's supposed to maintain them. And so I think it's time that we actually put together a study to figure out what's a private road and what's a public road, and if it's a private road, who's responsible for the maintenance of it? If there's no agreement with all the people that come onto the road, then it won't get done. So I just think it's an area that we need to look at in the near future. Thanks.
Thank you, Max. Anyone else wish to speak? All right, we'll bring it back up here. Did we have any written communication?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Normally, we don't comment on these things. I will comment on 5way 50. It's a long, strange story, and we will-- we can talk about it at some point. There's always something going on, and who knows? But it's been being talked about forever. So, but if you want to chat about it sometime, I'd be more than happy to talk to you. All right, great. We did not pull any items from the consent calendar. We have no ordinances and no public hearings. We do have a number of discussion items. So, Owen, I'm going to put a big X through 1213 so I don't actually start reading yet, or 12.3. All right, 12.1, acknowledge and file the 30-day notice to approve Amendment Number Eight to the Joint Exercise of Powers Agreement with Pioneer Community Energy and provide input and direction to Councilmember Carter on how to vote for the Amendment Number Eight at the governing board meeting held on December 18, 2025. Mr. Warren?
Good evening, Mayor Clarici, members of the council. So I'll kind of tee this one up and then hand it off to Councilmember Carter. So as a refresher, Pioneer Community Energy is a joint powers authority formed between the counties of Placer, Eldorado, the towns of Loomis, cities of Auburn, Colfax, Grass Valley, Lincoln, Nevada City, Placerville, and Rockland. Pioneer is a community choice aggregation program authorized under Assembly Bill 117-2002. The CCA provides local control over electricity supply with the primary goal of providing stable and competitive electricity rates to the residents of businesses within its member jurisdictions. Pioneer purchases the electricity supply, and PG&E transmits and delivers the power through PG&E's infrastructure. PG&E continues to own, operate, and maintain its distribution infrastructure and continues to provide meter reading and billing services for Pioneer customers. Staff received the attached, in your packet, 30-day notice to approve Amendment Number Eight to the Joint Exercise of Powers Agreement with Pioneer. If approved by the Pioneer Governing Board, the proposed amendment would allow the addition of the counties of Madera, City of Chowchilla, County of Calusa, City of Calusa, and the City of Williams to become members of Pioneer. Additional information about the proposed members is contained in the attached memorandum from Donald Eckert, junior chief executive officer who's here tonight, Pioneer. Councilmember Carter serves as a member of Pioneer Community Energy's governing board on behalf of the city of Placerville. In the spirit of gaining the consensus from his fellow council members, Councilmember Carter is asking for input on how to vote for Amendment Number Eight when it is heard by the governing board on December 18 of this year. If the governing board approves the Amendment Number Eight, an application would then be submitted to the public, California Public Utilities Commission for final approval. Staff recommends that the city council acknowledge and file the 30-day notice that makes us aware of the Amendment Number Eight to the Joint Exercise of Powers Agreement with Pioneer Community Energy and provide input and direction to Councilmember Carter on how to vote for Amendment Number Eight. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions and pass it on to Councilmember Carter.
Yeah, excellent. Thank you. And I'll give you a quick overview of why I asked for this to be brought tonight. So as Mr. Warren stated, we currently have 10 members on our governing board for the Pioneer Community Energy. We've committed already in October of 2027 to expanding that to 24 members. That's already done. But this, tonight is the addition of a possibility of five more board members to the board. So that nearly-- it's nearly tripling the size of the board of directors. There were some concerns raised by another board member that-- about dilution, and that's why I decided to bring it to you guys tonight, because with 29 members of the board, that does significantly dilute our voting power on the board of directors. So real quick, it's important to note that every new community goes through an impact assessment study to verify that that new community will benefit from joining Pioneer as well as existing communities not being harmed. And all five of these communities have gone through that process, and it has been determined that it will be mutually beneficial. It's an economy of scale, so we have better pricing on power contracts, and then operational costs are spread over a larger customer base. It's kind of a couple of the things that we could benefit from. So since I represent the city and the will of this council, I thought it prudent to bring this question to the full council to guide my vote on the addition of these five new members to the Pioneer Board in 2027. So my main concern, like I said, it's, we're already going to 24. That's been determined. I just wanted to get a consensus from you guys about how you felt about the additional five. And Pioneer has committed to no further expansion until this new board is seated, and there's -- they're going to go through some governance review to see how they want to move forward. But as of now, this will be the last of the expansion until that new board is seated in late 2027. And we do have Pioneer here to answer any questions. I also provided a map that kind of goes over the additional jurisdictions that are joining already and that want to join, just for your reference. As you can see, we're going pretty far south and pretty far north in our service area. And I don't remember, I know it's more than doubling our overall customer base, and Gina can correct me on the exact number, but the main question tonight is how you guys feel about the dilution of our vote and whether you're okay with that. And my position is I don't mind, but I wanted to get your guys' opinion on how I should vote.
Thank you very much for that. Okay, do we have any questions, comments right now? Is there anything-- You are a former person.
Yeah.
And you're the backup.
I served on the board, and I'm currently Ryan's backup. Holy cow, this thing is like live. Okay. You got it? Did you get it? Did you get it? I think Steve got it. Quick question, and Gina, you're probably able to answer this. So what is the percentage of purchasing power that we're expanding to? I mean, are we-- I mean, we're obviously more than doubling our purchasing power. Are we going more than that or less than that?
We are going to have about a 120% increase.
Increase, okay. So what's the expected, for lack of a better word, reduction in price cost that we might be able to get in being able to purchase 120% more power?
That's a great question. I cannot, and I--
I know Sam's not here.
I cannot accurately predict today what prices will be for the long term.
Right, right.
But what I can tell you is that the addition of new territories do give us added buying power, a little bit more influence.
Okay, okay. It's like Don wants to add in, so--
Donald Eckert with us, Pioneer Community Energy. So what we're seeing right now with the power supply markets is, and why we're moving quickly on these next five, is that the power markets right now are less in cost than what we have in our budget, which means we should be able to reduce rates with that. Hopefully, that answered your question.
Yeah, no, that's-- and that's kind of where I'm going, just to kind of help everybody understand, too, that this is what basically is going to be the benefit, because at that point, when they start reducing cost of purchasing power, that means our costs actually get a little better. So, yeah, so with those being answered for me, I'm good with it.
Yeah, I was just looking, and I mean, it seems like a purely politics thing because from the get-go, Placer County had a majority of the vote. We've always had a very much lesser vote, and the idea that, I mean, I was just looking at this earlier, and I was like, well, why wouldn't we? That's my main question. Why wouldn't we? Does Pioneer plan on-- Does Pioneer plan on stopping there? What are the other counties' path forward to this sort of energy? Would you start a second Pioneer group, or, I mean, why are you going to exclude them from this group, is what I don't understand? Yeah.
I think I can address that real quick, and I fully support as many communities benefiting from Pioneer. I'm looking at it purely from Placerville's perspective, and my only concern is the dilution of our power in the, in the voting pool of the Board of Directors further than it already has been. And that's, I mean, I don't see a real concern with it, but I thought it was probably worthwhile to get your guys' consensus on that. That's the only concern I have.
So I just have, I mean, I'm supportive of this. I think the economics make it. But just with that concern, like, are there frequently controversial split votes on Pioneer's board? Like, what's?
Not necessarily. I mean, this one might have a couple of dissenting votes, but no, to answer your question. But the, but the board does determine rates, and we do determine, you know, a lot of stuff that, you know, may or may not benefit the City of Placerville, and that's, that's the concern that I had, was just our ability to control our own destiny.
Presumably, there's a trade-off, with like with all things. I'm assuming that the expectation when this was started was that it would get bigger, you know what I mean? And maybe it's just because they're adding so much at once, it's like everybody's hair is on fire a little bit. I don't really have a problem with it. I wonder about these blue counties here, because what's wrong with them? Okay, um, do we have any, okay, I think we've covered that up here. We all good? Okay, let's, we'll open this up for public comment. Okay, I don't see any public comment. We will bring it back here. Direct, we should direct him.
Sounds like you already-
I think we've directed you. You seem to understand.
Vote in favor of it.
Yes, there we go. Boom, done. You have been directed. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
And thank you, Gina and Don and everybody for being here to answer the question. Thank you.
All righty. 12.2. Item 12.2, rescheduling of the regularly scheduled November 11th, 2025 City Council Meeting due to Veterans Day and consideration of cancellation of November 25th, 2025 regular scheduled City Council Meeting, because that is two days from Thanksgiving, and we will all be focused on Turkey. So, so let's see, who's doing this one? Regina, Ms. O'Connell. Oh, we are? That has your name on it. Surprise! It's okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Basically, we need to move the, I think the title says it all. You don't, yeah.
Let me know if you have any questions.
We have any questions? Okay. I guess the question is, which day do we move it to? I looked at my Wednesday, the following Wednesday, and it was open. And I think the expectation is we would move it to whatever day I have off. No. Assuming that it's okay with everybody.
The 12th. Yeah, the 12th is good for me.
Okay, we like that? All right. And obviously, two days before Thanksgiving, we couldn't keep anybody's attention on anything. Then, yeah, I know. All right. Does anybody wish to comment on us moving our meeting? If you have something really wrong against Wednesdays. I see nothing. Okay, great. Let's bring it back here for a motion.
I will move staff's recommendations on both meetings.
Okay. Did they recommend we move it to the 12th?
Yes, it's on the-
Okay, it's right there.
I'll second one.
It's right there in printing. Okay, good. We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Carter?
Aye.
Councilmember No?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gottberg?
Aye.
Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, we are, we don't, we're not doing 12.3. 12.4. Consider directing staff to-
Wait, wait, wait.
Flim, 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 flim.
I'm sorry, did you ask for public comment?
Oh, we should ask for public. Does anybody wish to comment on item 12.3, which is the, I guess I should read it so that they would know what we're talking about. Consider adopting a resolution supporting the application of jamboree housing for a local government matching grant for, what?
Sorry, for 12.2. We asked for-
Yeah, we asked for public comment. Oh, man, you know, I'm not loud enough. I don't think that's ever happened, okay? Okay, can we do 12.4? Okay, we don't have to do anything with 12.3. Get it out of your head. I just brought that up. 12.4, consider directing staff to prepare an ordinance adding a chapter on non-residential property maintenance to Title Four of the Placerville Municipal Code. Ms. Kendrick, please.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and City Manager Warren. Carol Kendrick, Director of Development Services, presenting item 12.4 tonight with a recommendation for direction on adding Title Four of the Municipal Code, establishing non-residential property maintenance standards with a focus on vacant buildings. The purpose is straightforward, to stop blight before it spreads, neglected commercial properties, especially vacant ones, deter visitors, hurt local businesses, lower property values, and threaten public safety and stormwater quality. Clear and enforceable standards will promote a vibrant downtown and support our business-friendly community. This request aligns with our strategic plan in the Economic Vitality and Community Character Strategy One and downtown revitalization by ensuring clean, attractive, and well-maintained buildings that draw people and investment. It also honors the 1990 General Plan mandate to preserve historic character and prevent deterioration, a priority echoed by the Placerville Economic Advisory Committee, who has requested that staff bring this forward to the City Council. Similar challenges in Saratoga and Nevada City have been successfully addressed with comparable codes. With your approval, we will review existing codes, study peer ordinances, and draft standards covering outdoor storage, landscaping, trash and debris, buildings and structures, fences, graffiti, and specific requirements for vacant properties securing windows and doors, maintaining window displays, and preventing nuisances. The draft will ensure consistency with the General Plan, CEQA compliance, and our commitment to high quality. Tonight, you have three options. You can direct staff to draft this ordinance. We can continue this item for further discussion, or you can direct staff not to proceed. This action is exempt under CEQA under Section 15061B3. The preparation of this ordinance will take approximately 15 hours of staff time that can be absorbed into the current year budget. This concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. In addition, our building official, Greg Horstfall, is here for technical questions.
All right. Well, do we have any questions, comments? Oh, well-
I just wanted to add one clarification to this. So this would be more in the nature of proactive nuisance abatement. It would not be any kind of attacks on vacant buildings or non-residential buildings. That would have to go through to the voters. And occasionally, I have cities come and say, we want to pass an ordinance where if you have a vacant building, you have to pay the city a fee for it being vacant. We cannot do that without going to the voters.
Thanks for that clarification.
Okay, well, thank you for that clarification. That would have never occurred to me. Okay, but it does apparently in other places. Okay, do we have any comments, questions from up here?
I just have a couple of quick questions, and I guess, thank you, Mona, for that clarification, because I might partially answer my question. So we, our current zoning and code enforcement doesn't, will it not address this already with our, with our, with our current codes? What's the purpose of this additional level of ordinance?
Our current code does not address this, so it was something that Peak brought up previously, and they provided me with some language, but that is specific to graffiti, and it doesn't really address this. I know Mr. Horstfall did some research on that, and he might be able to elaborate on that as well.
That would be my next question, was, just based on your experience, or maybe the building official can answer, but what would something like this, just a overview, what would it look like? Like, what exactly would we be addressing? How would we, how would enforcement work? I mean, are we, are we registering business owners in any way? Are they, I was just curious how this would function, or would it just fall under code enforcement as it currently operates?
I can start with that and then turn it over to staff, but I think staff is seeking direction on the level of comfort that you have. It can come back to you in a variety of ways. One example is the city maintains an inventory of vacant businesses. It sends a community, a CSO, out to inspect them, so it proactively prevents, for example, attractive nuisances or other things from ballooning into bigger problems. So that is one potential option, but staff can provide more of their direct observations and what they're hoping to achieve.
Okay.
I do appreciate the question, and it was anticipated. Housing and Community Development, State of California, gives us the authority to enforce their provisions, but it just pertains to residential, not non-residential. So our code is weak when it comes to administration and enforcement of unsafe structures when they are non-residential. So what we wanted to do was actually tackle a lot of issues that we have with our non-residential properties, including meet the wishes of Placerville Economic Advisory Committee while reinforcing our ability to actually enforce against non-residential buildings. I'm more interested in unsafe structures, utility connections, and uses of the vacant building itself being substandard, but we did find a way to also allow the aesthetics to play into this chapter as well, on behalf of the wishes of Peak, which I agree would detour the nuisances from those buildings.
Excellent. Thank you for that clarification.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Sure.
So what this registry would also do is provide an opportunity for staff to have a conversation with the property owner who may be, may live out of town, and we may not have their contact information otherwise to talk about their plans for the property. It also creates a list for potential tenants to look for property, you know, the available property that we have. So anyway, I see it as a tool for economic development as well. Thank you.
When I was on the Peak, that was one thing we were always trying to kind of get together, was just a listing of all the commercial properties in town and get some idea of what they were, because the city manager frequently gets calls from people and says, I'm looking for 10,000 square feet or whatever. And, you know, unless they happen to know that there's a building and that's vacant, then, then that information isn't always available. And of course, we had the epic example of where the grocery outlet is, the previous landlord who, you know, it was an eyesore, it was a problem, and we really didn't have a lot of tools to deal with it. So, I mean, that's kind of the nth degree, but there are a few properties here in town that could use a little talking to, so. Anyway, I'm fine with it. Let's, we have any more question, comments, or anything up here? Okay. Does the public wish to comment on this?
Sue Rodman, City of Placerville. Good evening, Council. I think this is a great idea, because you've got, we do have some pretty good ordinances for all the residential areas, but we've got some areas in town that have some serious blight and need to be cleaned up. And this would give us some tools to, to talk to property owners and tell them, hey, if you would like to rent your property and you'd like to have some income from it, here's the things you need to do. And here's the things you need to do just because you're in the City of Placerville. And we take pride in our city, and we want it to be kept up, and we want it to be in good shape, and we don't want to have problems with the, with the utilities and especially our sewer and water because you aren't maintaining your building. So I think this is a great idea.
Thank you, Sue. Anyone else wish to comment? All right, we'll bring it back up here. So I, it's, I'm feeling like the direction is to go make something happen and bring it back to us, and you've gotten enough input on that, and so they'll bring something back? Is that okay? Okay, good.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just say, I'm totally fine with a registry, and I think anything that's like a true public safety hazard, like utilities or structure, I think on the aesthetics, I'm a little bit less inclined to be trying to regulate vacant properties' aesthetics, so that's just-
Let's see what they have.
Yeah, my question, I had a thought of the aesthetics, but I think the aesthetics that they're going after is abandoned vehicles, abandoned equipment, abandoned stuff around the building and such. I don't think it's necessarily, you've got to paint your building this color, or, you know, you can't have these kind of overhangs, kind of thing, so.
My only concern, just real quick, it would just be, I'm uncomfortable with the, the registry is a little icky. I just, mandatory, you know, registry requirements might be a no-go for me, but I'm not sure how that's going to work. I look forward to seeing what comes back.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right, you have direction. And we will move on. 12.5. Consider abolishing the lab director position, approving a new full-time laboratory technician 1/2 position, and approving a full-time maintenance mechanic position, and approving and affirming a new salary schedule effective November 8th, 2025. Ms. Savage.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. The item before you this evening proposes some staffing changes that are needed at the city's Hangtown Creek Water Reclamation Facility. The adopted fiscal year 2526 operating budget includes a lab director position that is no longer filled due to a retirement. Earlier this year, the Engineering Department made the economic decision to relinquish the environmental laboratory accreditation program certification, and now the facility sends out all compliance samples to a certified private lab. This has greatly reduced the level of technical competence and labor that is required to run the lab. However, the lab must still process, provide process control testing, state reporting, data organization, instrument calibration, private lab collaboration, and other miscellaneous tasks. Since the end of 2024, the operators have been taking on the majority of the additional workload, which is not sustainable as it takes away from other operations and maintenance duties. After the new chief plant operator began in August, staff began reviewing the existing workload, the operations and maintenance needs of the plant, and evaluating succession planning. As part of that process, staff identified two gaps in staffing that, if filled, will ensure that some of the city's most critical infrastructure continues to maintain, to be maintained and operates smoothly. The water reclamation facility underwent extensive upgrades in the early 2000s. While the civil facilities, like concrete tanks and piping typically have a longer lifespan, many mechanical components installed, have either approached or outlived their theoretical equipment lifespans. It is now important to ensure that the proper preventative maintenance is performed on a regular basis to prevent costly replacement of the mechanical components. Currently, the city has a senior maintenance mechanic position filled with a very dedicated employee who has a significant amount of institutional knowledge. He trained in all facility upgrades since the 2000s. This employee is likely to retire prior to 2027, and when that occurs, he will take with him the longest span of institutional knowledge at the facility. There is an immediate need to train and transfer two decades of knowledge to a new employee. Staff is recommending to abolish the existing lab director position, add a new full-time maintenance mechanic position, and add one new full-time laboratory technician 1/2 position. The proposed laboratory technician position is a non-management position, which is more in line, in alignment with the current lab goals and will be a more appropriate service class to provide analytical support of operations. The proposed job description is provided as an attachment to the staff report, and the city met and conferred with the International Union of Operating Engineers Local 39 before placing this item on the agenda. If approved, the projected $82,961 annual net increase cost, accounting for both new positions, will be incorporated into the current wastewater cost of service study and the proposed fiscal year 2627 operating budget. That concludes my verbal report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions? Do we have any comments? We have neither comments nor questions. Would anybody from the public wish to comment on these things?
Sue Rodman, Member of the Measure H, Measure L Committee. And this sounds like a good compromise to help this plant, because this plant is absolutely critical to the City of Placerville. Don't know if anybody remembers when we had a big problem with sewage spill, but the state of California told us, your, your fine will be $10,000 a day until you get this fixed. We made a compromise with them, and that's why the plant got upgraded in the first place. We don't want to get in that situation again. And you do need somebody in the lab, but it doesn't have to be a high, high-ranking person. Ordinary lab techs can do this sort of thing. I have done this sort of work, so I know it can be done. And this sounds like, and if we lose our mechanic, we are going to be in deep trouble. So we need somebody to backfill and learn what he already knows. So I support this. I think this is a good idea.
Thank you, Sue. Anyone else wish to comment? All right, bring it back up here for further discussion or action.
I will move 12.5, staff's recommendation.
We have a motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion, a second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember- Councilmember Carter?
Aye.
Councilmember No?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gottberg?
Aye.
Mayor Clarici?
Aye. Thank you. All right. We are moving and shaking here. All righty. One more thing. Okay. Let's see here. Let's go to the next page. Ooh, council reports from other agencies, other meetings. El Dorado Transit Authority?
Meet next week.
El Dorado County Transportation Commission?
Meet next week.
Olafco?
We did not meet.
Secog. I didn't go to the Secog meeting because I went to the ribbon cutting of the new grocery outlet, which I thought was way more important. Okay. Pioneer Community Energy?
We did meet, but we already addressed the item earlier.
Fantastic. Fire Safe Council?
Did not meet.
Opportunity Knox?
Did not meet.
Wow. Does anybody wish to comment on the things we didn't do in all of this here? Oh, you do, by all means.
I know about Secog, and I know about all your transportation situations to some degree, like that much. However, I don't know what's been done in the last, I've been here 20 years. I was mainly out of country, but I bought in Pollock Pines, and my thoughts are that it's been a lot of improvement. Missouri Flat Road, a lot of things with Apple Hill, the connection with the apples and the, the ranchers, it's good for business. But the biggie is, is this issue with El Dorado Transportation. That's the reason I'm here. And I don't know really what's been done. And my thought is, is that hopefully, there's been some things that have been done because of the amount of time it takes to get things approved with Caltrans. The one person that talked about the roads and things here in Placerville, that's fine. But once again, if you can't get through Placerville, there's a big problem. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. No other comments? Do we have any requests for future agenda items? Okay. City Manager and Staff Reports, 15.1, receiving files, September 2025 Police Reports, Stats. Chief Ren.
Could I say we didn't meet, or is that?
No. You can't say that.
Thank you. Again, things are, are pretty manageable, although, you know, we put numbers on a piece of paper, but it's not lost on us that those numbers reflect somebody who probably had a bad day or maybe the worst day of their life. So, we are empathetic to that, and until I can absolutely eradicate any criminal activity in the city of Placerville, I promise to continue to show up and do my very best, day in and day out. I know there's some questions, and I'll be happy to answer any.
Oh, I, I had one question.
That's right.
That might refer to me. We just had a couple of months in a row where our Priority One call response time was over five minutes. I was just wondering if that was staffing or kind of what was behind that, because it seems out of the norm for us.
Sure, I looked into it. There's no, there's a number of things. We have three officers that are currently off-shift due to injuries sustained in the line of duty, and that's 33% of our patrol staff. So, I don't want to freak the, the public out. We're still meeting the demands that are placed on us, but it may slow our response to some of those Priority One calls that don't have a life-threatening component to it. So, I, you know, I, I don't think I ever explained what Priority One calls are. Would you like me to go over it again? Okay. So, Priority One police calls are life-threatening emergencies that require immediate response, such as an active robbery, a traffic collision with injury, or a medical emergency. Some examples of those are crimes in progress, such as robbery, active burglary, or assault with a deadly weapon. Also included are medical emergencies, any kind of fire, heart attack, stroke, or overdose incident, traffic collisions with injury, or hit-and-runs with injury, or other life-threatening serious situations, such as hostage abduction, pursuit, or explosive devices, and all missing persons cases are Priority One calls. So, we, there was a study done back in 81 that talked about the five-minute response time. The national average is around 10 minutes. So, for us, five minutes is our target. If we start creeping up significantly past that, then we need to take a look at how we're deploying our resources and make sure that we're being as efficient as possible, because what ends up happening is, you know, every, every second after five minutes reduces our probability of actually catching somebody who committed the crime, and it drops, you know, goes from 60% probability of arrest down to about 20 to 10%. So, we constantly look at that stuff. You know, I've mentioned previously that I get 91 pages of statistics each month, and I can, I really, I'm a nerd when it comes to this stuff. I really want to make sure that we're utilizing our resources to the best of our, our ability to serve the community. So, we're getting there for the life-threatening stuff. Some of the other stuff, we're a little bit slower, but we're still breaking units. We're pulling them off of details to send them to that stuff, to, you know, calm the situation and to regain some sort of control where we can evaluate what our response is going to be for that particular incident. But you're right, I love when I'm able to brag the three minutes, but I got to own the five minute too. So, you get the good with the bad sometimes. But I, I hope that answers some questions about kind of our Priority Ones and where the time comes into to play and how it impacts our ability to actually catch knuckleheads in the act of committing a crime.
Are there any other questions? I would just want to comment on some incredible sleuthing. We had an incident at Old City Hall here in the last week or so, and, got them. Anyway, so.
Off the big guns.
Got them. So, thank you. All right. Do we have any comments on 15.1? Our police records. You don't have to raise your hand, just go stand there. Oh, that's very polite of you.
Three to five minutes, that's how long you have if you have to have medical attention. Basically, you have to get IVN, and if you don't get the IVN, the person goes into deep shock, and you won't recover them. So, the biggie is, is that it gets back to traffic, too. If you can't get to your people, fire EMT. If you can't get to them, they're dead. A lot of people move down the mountain, a lot of people move down the mountain, because they, they basically need to get close to Marshall here. If you have to get to Marshall down, farther down, you don't make it. That's the reality. Now, I have 17 up where I'm at, and I'm sure that they can testify how many people don't make it. Another issue, medical safety. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wish to comment? All right. Thank you. We'll bring it back. 15.2, Development Services Department Monthly Statistics for September. Ms. Kendrick.
Good evening, Mayor, Council members, and City Manager Warren. I'm presenting the Development Services Monthly Activity Statistics for September 2025. We issued a total of 38 building permits, 24 being residential, including 18 single-family home alterations for accessory dwelling units and two new homes, and nine commercial, including five tenant improvements, three signage permits, and one new commercial shell, and five others for pools, solar installations, and demolitions. 312 inspections were conducted, 198 being building, 74 plumbing and mechanical, 40 electrical. All same-day inspection requests were completed with an average turnaround time of 24 hours. On the planning side, we issued two temporary use permits. And the total revenue from fees for September of 2025 reached $184,620, $152,400 from building permits, and the remaining for planning fees. That represents a 6% increase since August, driven by steady demand for home upgrades and small business improvements. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Well, that's just fantastic. That's so exciting. All right. Do we have any questions, comments about that, what I think is very exciting news? Is all good? We're getting nods up here? All right, great. Does anybody want to comment on that very exciting news? All right, I like to set expectations. Okay, great. We'll bring it back here. Upcoming items, you can read the upcoming items, because I know you can all read. We will adjourn to not November 11th, but November 12th. All right, we'll see you there. Have a happy Halloween. Remember, Halloween, Main Street. Have a great time. All right. All righty.